He'll be our next item on the agenda will be the Pledge Allegiance and a Prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great and precious stand of our nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Richard, I understand you're going to help us out today.
Yeah, I will. Everybody bow your heads, please. Daddy Father, thank you for today, thank you for the blessings that you give us daily, thank you for being in this office. Thank you for everybody that serves this county and all the communities in this county. Thank you for first responders and all that they do also. Be with us in this meeting, help us to make good decisions and have good choices. And help us to lead the county in the direction it needs to go. Thank you for all your blessings again and for your son who died for us, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. I'd like to welcome everybody here today. Glad you're participating. We do have a proclamation that needs to be read and I'll get right with that. And this is Proclamation Community Foundation Week. Whereas Reno County recognizes the importance of our community's philanthropic sector and the critical importance of charitable giving from residents, businesses, and organizations. And whereas more than 790 community foundations across the US and more than 100 in Kansas catalyze and promote the values and benefits of local philanthropy. And whereas, for 36 years, Hutchinson Community Foundation has made more than $115 million in grants to the community, established 386 funds, and provided tools for Hutchinson residents, businesses, organizations to create permanent philanthropic resources for the current and future needs of our communities. Allowing individuals from all walks of life to exercise generosity and philanthropy and be philanthropists in small, medium, and large ways. And whereas through the power of philanthropy, the Community Foundation also convenes residents around critical community issues and efforts strengthens the nonprofits in our region and works with partners to root and accelerate community wealth through local investments in business and projects that align with its mission and long-term community outcomes. Whereas together we can build a stronger Reno County and Kansas and improve the future by creating community legacies to benefit all residents. And whereas it is appropriate to set aside a time to recognize the value of and impact of philanthropy and community foundations on a state, regional, and local level for the investment, partnership, and leadership they create across Kansas communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Reno County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 12th through 18th, 2025 as Community Foundation Week in Reno County. And as Giving Tuesday approaches December 2nd, 2025, encourage all residents to recognize and support the impact of philanthropy and community foundations their nonprofit partners, volunteers, and donors have statewide in witness thereof. And we have hereunto set our hands and cause the seal of the county of Kansas to be affixed. So with that, I understand Carrie is here to receive this. Before we give it to you, we need to get a signature on here, it says we've signed. Excuse me. I've got one, I just gotta get it out, thank you Randy. And I think Sandra, you want this in general way? Body as whole making a presentation. Or just exercising at me for you, Richard?
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much for that, again, I'm Carrie May, I'm Director of Strategy at Hutchinson Community Foundation. It's fun to get proclamations. As you said, in 1989 Hutchinson Community Foundation was established with a mission to serve as a method of giving money. Since then, our starting investment of $400,000 has grown to $130 million in assets. And that mission has evolved to a goal of inspiring philanthropy, leadership, and collaboration to strengthen Reno County communities. We help donors with their philanthropic goals through a variety of giving strategies while supporting roughly 75 nonprofit organizations that serve Reno County through grant-making, strategic initiatives, capacity building, and leadership development. In short, we use our social, moral, intellectual, reputational, and financial capital to identify gaps, connect donors, and create solutions to adaptive challenges facing our communities. A recent example of how we're doing that is through our housing initiative. We're committing to deploy 2.46 million in grants and loans by 2028 to support the efforts of housing nonprofits and small-scale developers in making progress on the housing challenges facing our communities. And we recently wrapped up the second year of our Love Where You Live Resident Perception Survey. With the results coming soon, we're listening to residents and responding to what we're hearing through this three-year effort. And our Fund for Reno County Endowment has been a critical tool. And rural Reno County communities especially, we're helping towns with projects that connect residents, promote pride, and preserve important places. And this is the time of year that we ask for contributions to the Fund for Reno County, which was established in 1990 as a permanent source to meet ever-changing needs of Reno County. Through that fund, we've awarded 6.3 million in grants to Reno County projects in the last 35 years. And within the last year, we made 48 grants totaling more than $475,000 that have been awarded to 56 organizations serving Reno County. And we have a goal of growing that fund to 20 million by 2030, which would allow us to make $1 million annually in grants. So we ask anyone, especially on this occasion of Giving Tuesday, to make a gift to their favorite charity and consider the Fund for Reno County as one of those options. We do have an affiliate community foundation, the Bueller Community Foundation, that just serves the community of Bueller. And they are actually doing their match day on Giving Tuesday, December 2nd. So that's a specific one, people could contribute. Here in the next month or so, we're going to release our Youth Philanthropy Council grants that are for youth-serving projects. And then we'll announce our 2026 grant cycles for the Fund for Reno County. So we look forward to supporting many, many more projects and organizations and partnering with the county and many other communities and partners to keep making progress in the community. So thank you for the proclamation and the time.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comments on items not being considered on this agenda. So if anyone in the audience would have any comments on something not on our agenda today, now's the time. I'm not seeing anybody coming forward, so we'll assume that there are no public comments this week. We need next to determine any additions or revisions to our agenda. You said something about?
We don't need any additional stuff.
Okay.
No, I think we're okay.
Alright, I know there was some thought that there might be an item that we needed to. With not seeing anybody here on the board needing some changes, I'd say we need to move into our consent agenda. And there are lists there, nothing was changed there. Do we have any discussion on any items there?
Well, one of the items on here with the Wifco Steel Products, I see the gentleman's here, I didn't know whether he had any kind of an update maybe with how the project's going or? Yeah, if you would please, and state who you are. Just like you're an update, I don't think it's going to change anything, I just, it'd be nice to hear, so the public could hear.
Well, Josh Stubbs couldn't make it because his wife had a baby yesterday, so he apologizes for not being here. The update is, we continue to add, right now we're staying at around 90 employees. We're getting ready to add our second laser, which is the 26K laser that'll be operational January. And this whole movement has been to diversify Wifco from mainly being oil and gas into other industries like ag, automotive, and items like that that fit in our wheelhouse for engineering and designing steel-structured items. So that's really the update we got right now, we're also putting in a new ERP system, which is also a financial system, so we got a lot going on right now and it's been pretty hectic. So, you guys have any questions?
I didn't really have a question, I just thought it'd be good for the public to hear that, and hear what exciting things you're doing out there.
Yeah, it's been busy.
Yeah, good.
Have you been adding positions since you go?
Yes, we have, we started probably ramping up as we were diversifying because we saw some big changes coming in, especially in the automotive. And an example of that would be utility truck beds. So like the cable trucks that you see that have the beds, we're making those now. For a lot of, for about three different, four different companies across the United States. They've came to us, they're either OEM or they're direct-to-consumer that are ordering specialized beds. And that's been a big one for us. And then also in the construction industry, we've been making a lot of data racks for data centers for a large GC company. So it's been, it's been a big change from oil and gas, building stairway and walk, to doing what we're doing now.
How many positions have we added here the recent?
We've added, since we asked for the proposal, approximately 22. So I think we'll get, we'll probably be pushing that limit of 100 by first quarter of next year.
So it's a major?
It's a major investment, and you know, capital-wise, over the next couple of years, Wifco will probably invest close to $6 million in capital for the company to help with this, so.
I just want to say I want to congratulate Wifco on their To the Stars Kansas Department of Commerce program. That they were one of Reno County businesses here who received a Merit Award. And just say congratulations and thank you for your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, it was nice to hear.
Thank you, just wanted to take a quick moment, Lauren Storm with Greater Hutch. Wanted to speak to the partnership that makes this support possible to help our businesses grow, to support high-wage jobs and expansion and quality investment in Reno County. So thank you very much to Reno County and the funds available to make this possible and the ongoing partnership that helps our community grow and thrive.
Seeing no further comment, do we have any comment up here further on anything on this consent agenda? Well then I entertain a motion to accept.
A motion to pass that considers agenda as proposed?
I'd second that.
We have a motion and a second, has anybody got any comment before we vote? Seeing none, Abigail, help us out here.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes. Motion passes. We have some business items to look at today. And I think?
The Horizon's Quarterly Update, Vicki Mater's here for to discuss.
Alright.
Alright, good morning, I'm Vicki Mater with Horizon's Mental Health Center. Just wanted to share a little update with everyone on how, what's going on at Horizon's. Shared some data with you about how many clients we've seen over the last five quarters so we can see a trend of clients served and services provided. You'll notice that from fiscal year 24, quarter four, through fiscal year 25, quarter four, we increased by 300 individuals that we served. So we're still trending upward in demand for services and our service counts. We, I did give a little graph, the breakdown of what those services entail. It entails our therapy, our respite care, community psychiatric support and treatment, peer support groups, and several other things. So I'd shared that with you so you could see the breakdown of those services. Any questions about the clients served and the services data? Alright, well I'm going to move on to our financial update for the, for this quarter. We did finalize our audit for fiscal year 25. And I'm just going to point out a couple of things that were pretty significant for us in that year. So with the audit, we had a $4 million negative adjustment to our financials. We still ended the year with a positive $1.2 million. That adjustment is because of some things that happened with our electronic medical record, we went with a new one. And some of the reports that we were using weren't the best ones, the auditors would like us to use some different ones. And we also had a little bit of an issue in November and December where the system didn't drop claims that we could bill out for the services we provided. So we had to do an adjustment in February. And as part of that adjustment, it over-inflated the revenue, is what happened. And so then we had to true it all up after the, at the end of the year. So we've got it all fixed, it shouldn't be an issue moving forward, we're using all the right reports. But I, it's a pretty significant adjustment, so I wanted to explain kind of what happened with that. Still very positive, still the 1.2 million positive operating margin for the year, so.
The, the cause of the adjustments was equipment malfunction?
It's, it was a system, using different, the wrong reports through the system. We were using the reports we were told to use, and then through the audit, we found more accurate reports that better reflected basically contractual write-offs. And so with our CCBHC, we have to bill all the services together but get paid a single payment. And so some of the reports we were using weren't calculating those other, those other charges to get them written off appropriately. And so we found some better reports to use and we've implemented those.
So it was a software?
Yeah, software issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somebody writing the software that doesn't understand the unresolved, happens in a lot of places.
Yeah, sometimes it's just trial and error and we do the best we can, but that's why you do an audit, is so that they can help you. And we'd been working with them, we knew something was off back in, in March. We had been working with our auditors back that far to try to get it figured out.
It's good that you figured it out and it's straightened out.
Any other questions about financials? Okay, another, just a couple other quick updates I wanted to let you know about. Our adult community services team has moved downtown, we are now in the Wiley Building. We moved on Friday, so they're, they're getting set up in there. So that team will be closer to a lot of the population that we serve, so they can respond quicker. And we'll have appointments in there for individuals in this area, anybody can come in for those services. But that's our adult community services team. We're really excited to have a presence downtown in that area. Wanted to share a little bit of crisis data with you. We had 141 initial contacts with 47 follow-ups in July, August, and September of this year. And we had 78 admissions to our crisis center. So crisis continues to still be a need and we're really excited about that. We are one of the third highest crisis response teams in the state of Kansas, here in Reno County and our other four counties. I don't know if that's good or bad, but is what it is. And then I just wanted to let you know that we have, I've talked a lot about our Individual Placement Support Program and that's our employment program. And in the last fiscal year, that team was able to help 54 individuals find and maintain employment. And so that program supports them after they get their job and walks alongside them to help with their employer. And if it doesn't work, then we help them find another job, so pretty excited about that, that program continues to grow. So, those are just a few of my updates for you.
Anybody have any questions? Well, we have the expert at our seeing none, I thank you for your report.
Thank you so much.
The next thing on our agenda would be the 7B, correct? Well Helen?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Helen Foster, HR Director. The next thing that you see before you is talking about the commissioner pay. We had some conversation about this during a study session. And so this is kind of the breakout. We were trying to put together kind of a snapshot of the hours that you guys put in each week and basing that on where you're placed on the pay scale to come out with some kind of salary that matches the amount of hours that you guys put in. And so with that, if you see in that graph, it kind of breaks out five hours, seven hours, 10 hours, and 15 hours a week. That is basing, when Phil did the wage study, he actually placed all of the elected officials on the pay scale, including the commissioners. Commissioners were placed at grade 40. And so grade 40 at an entry level is 4683 hourly. And so that is the actual hourly rate that was used for that computation. And so one of the things, and I'm guessing you guys have reviewed this, but this kind of states kind of back to the history of when we did not have a county administrator. The salary for a commissioner was $27,000. But they were here full staff, 40 hours a week typically, and they, they had offices housed here in the courthouse. That changed when we had the county administrator come onboard. And with that, they reduced the salary. When the commission changed to five members, rather than changing the salary to go for all five members the same, they took the line item for the total that's paid in commission salaries and instead of splitting it three ways, they split it five ways. So that's where your salary's at today. With that, when, when we're looking at a salary, right now the salary is pretty low compared to the state of Kansas for commissioners. And so I think that does limit maybe the amount of people or the people that can take a position like this. It really does limit it to somebody who's maybe not looking for an income and has the extra time. Because it does take time for you guys to do all of the work that you do. Because it does take time for you guys to do all of the work that you do. So, with that, there's a few recommendations here. And this is kind of where you guys come in to make a decision as to what you want to do. So, the options for today would be to make a change in the pay for the county commissioners, table the discussion for a future meeting, or make no changes. With that too, I mean, we, we also got, we should look at where your salary is. You guys are benefits eligible. And typically, we get asked a lot of questions if, if we're actually reporting your full salary. Because for capers, when they look at that salary, it is pretty low. So, typically, they're asking a lot of questions along that line. So, that's one thing. And then the other thing would be on FLSA to take into consideration that minimum wage is 725. So, think about your hours that you're putting in and making sure that we, we get you at least to the threshold that you're, you're making minimum wage. I think if we go with the 10 hours that's on here, you guys are in minimum wage right now with what you're making. So, I know this is very tough. This concerns your own salary. But I'm, I'm open for questions or suggestions or...
I don't necessarily think it's very tough. I came to office and said that I wouldn't raise my salary, as I know some of the others did. But part of the problem that, I've kind of pushed on this a little bit. I know we did a year or so ago when Commissioner Weitzel was in office because it cost him pretty dearly to serve. But I see that some people during the day are not able to move around and follow some meetings that I think are pretty critical for the commission. And some weeks, obviously, are a lot longer than others that you spend time. But on an average, we're probably toward the tail end of that list. Now, maybe not clear to the end of it, but that you put together there. And for me, I'm just going to be blunt publicly. I lost a job because of this that I had. It was a good career. But I made a choice to serve the people, which I still intend to do. And so, it can be very costly to serve if it's not, even if we compensated at the top of that, it's not a career for most people. But it would give the option for some people to occupy this office in the future. And that's my concern with it. Not necessarily for myself. I'll survive. But what I want to see is people, good people, everyday working people have the chance to serve in office. And I think they moved, they made that move in Topeka a year or so ago up there because they were having the same issue. They wanted to make sure that people could serve the desire to do that. And most people can't. They don't have the time to do it. I talked to somebody yesterday that's on the, the city of Barton County, has a bunch of kids and they're trying to serve, and it's, they're just covered up. You know, he's not going to run again because it wasn't necessarily a money issue there. But it does take a lot of time sometimes with this. Certainly, if you're serving in capacity, and I'm sure Don's seen more hours this year because when you're in a chairman's seat, it's even more. But it's, it, it's not the time that we didn't want to afford to do this. It's, it's that I want to see people be able to come and serve in this office. And when you say when we brought an administrator on, most counties that are more than we are have an administrator as well. So, I mean, that factors in, I know, Helen. But it also is something I think we have to, to take into account that they do, they do pay more. And it, maybe it'd be an entitlement in the future for people to run. That's, that's my whole point. But, but again, you're not being compensated very well to do this. And it wasn't about the money to begin with, but it should be compensated, I believe, if it's at that pay. Make it easier for you at the state to answer to them if it looked like we made a real salary of some kind. So, but I, I haven't stated that public, publicly, but I was off for four months and I finally went to, went to work again. And I need to work, even if you paid more, still going to need to work. Some people will have to. But I think it's a good move. I really do. And I'll shut up and let the rest of them talk.
I am, well, I, I kind of struggle with this. I, I took the job on knowing the pay, didn't really know the commitment that I knew the pay. And I would say probably the commitments is a little more than the pay. But when I see on the news that the senators or the House of Representatives voted this House to raise, it infuriates me. I don't want to be one of them. On the other hand, I have talked to every constituent that I've, I've been in contact with in my district. And they, they don't believe how low the pay is when I tell them what we make. But after that, you know, I say, well, what should we make? Well, I get no help there. I mean, so, so it's, 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 you know, I probably won't go for it, but, but I understand it. I, I, I am, I do. And I think that the people that I've talked to understand the, you know, the, the, the need for it. Because it, like I said, you know, I've talked to several of them, you know, and, and they, they can't believe that, that the pay is that low. So, it's, that's a tough one. But I, I believe it's warranted, but I don't know if I, if I want to vote for it.
Helen, you made a statement I want to correct.
Oh, sure.
You said something about minimum wage. Based upon eight hours a week, based upon 50 weeks with two weeks for vacation, our present pay per hour at eight hours a week is just a few pennies under $29.50 an hour. How many of you on this commission have taken the time to accurately record the hours that you are involved in county business for a period of time, for every week for a period of time?
I have not.
I, I haven't, haven't. I, till this comes up, you don't see the need. You've made a commitment, as Ron has said, for those dollars, you know, going in. Like you say, it, it probably isn't enough. I know Randy has, has kept track for a little time. And so, I went back and looked at mine for, since September 22nd. And I've had weeks of two hours and I have weeks of 13. And every once in a while, I'll have weeks of 20 or better. I don't know what one would have to pay for have somebody not to, not to have a job or not to be in a position to afford this. I don't know what that pay would be, whether it's 36 or 40 or 50 or 25. But to compare our wage to a, an employee's wage of the county, I don't feel is fair. Because we are elected. Yes, we're an employee, but we are elected. And that's a whole different situation than being hired, being an application and putting in an application for a job and be hired. You know, I think until each of us takes the time to accurately record how many hours that we're actually involved with on exact, true county business, it, it's hard for me to make a decision based upon the hours. Now, you know, I may have missed some few minutes here and there on a telephone call or something like that. But I know what my average is over since September 22nd. When I first came on the council, of course, there was only three of us and I had a bigger territory. But for the five, first five, five years until COVID came, averaged a little over one meeting a day and 300 miles a month. And that was before the change to five. So, it's gone down because of other commissioners. We've got enough to spread the workaround. But until I, I feel that, and I don't think we should be compared to a pay grade because the fact that we're elected, and it's a whole different situation. We're representing people. Maybe that ought to be worth more money to represent our, all of our people. But, but still, I, I, I have trouble with that. I want to know why we would be justified in doing that. But like I said, the present, based upon eight hours a day, and it doesn't replace, it's just a part-time thing. Doesn't replace a full-time job. I understand. I don't know what we'd have to pay for somebody to be able to say, I'm going to be a county commissioner and quit my job. But then, but then he should be here 40 hours a week. And at that point, it should be 40 hours a week. You're right. But until we know how many hours that each one of us spend, I don't think we have a data enough to, to make a recommendation either way.
Well, I don't think you can calculate the hours because there's a couple at work and they don't, they do it in off-hours, they don't do it during the day. But my, my whole point is somebody that comes to serve in this future, I'm not going to be in here forever. I realize that. Somebody that comes to serve in the future needs to have the luxury to be able to do that and still work. And we got three of you here that don't have a full-time job. You do, you're farming, I get that. But, I mean, but you have the ability to be here. And I hate to limit it back to retired people or people of means to be able to do that. Nothing wrong with that. But it's been a good admixture that we've had in the five, I think. And I think we want to maintain that. And I think this, these kinds of pitfalls is, is, is going to limit that greatly. I, I see a couple that are not attending things now, that maybe that would help them to do that. And I'm just, I'm throwing that out there that, and it certainly, it certainly could be. Might give a person, I think back of a commissioner that was here when I was here, and their wage, sure, it was 27 then, given wage correction for today, it would be more. But he, he didn't, that's not a full-time job, but he worked part-time doing remodeling and construction stuff or painting on the side. And that's what he did along with this. It might give somebody the ability to do that and serve and things like that. So, I, I'm looking out for folks that want to run in the future as well. It isn't just me. I know Pat's got something to say over there. He's functioning a bit.
Well, and so, this isn't really illegal, it's just listening to the discussion and having thoughts about things. And I think that my only...
I've, I've thought of that. Not make it applicable to those who, who, because like Ron said, and I've said it, I, I knew what I did when I did it. And that's what I signed up for. If, as a group, we decide to stick to this hourly deal and keep track of our time, what should, what should be considered as time? It's like Ron says, oftentimes, this morning's deal. We were invited to, to a meeting early, which pushed the canvas back a little bit, which pushed a tight schedule here. So, those outside things that really may not be named in the job description or you wouldn't think of, but you're expected to be there, at least sometimes and, and not at ever meeting from ever different one. You can't do that. Like Ron says, it just, it'd be every day and it would be a full-time job. So, what do we consider if, if we're keeping track of our time? That, that's the, as being county and is, some things that I'm invited to as for the county are also organizations that I may have belonged to otherwise, whether I was a county commissioner or not. But you, you have a certain, people expect you to show up at certain things. So, where do you draw the line and what's the thoughts of the people if we're going to? That's, that's what made it so hard for me to come up with the exact, or computation of hours. I know today, these hours are counted. I know the hours I sit down and read these contracts. I know it looks like in the consent agenda and stuff, but you know, inevitably, there's 100 pages or as high as 400 pages to read if you're actually going to do your job. And that takes time. I, I can put a time on that, as Ron has done. Some weeks are light, some weeks are really heavy. But then you got all these outside things that, yes, you're expected to be at, or you get an invitation to be there so that you might be able to make a, be more knowledgeable and make a better decision when it comes to, to a decision the county has to make. I'd consider any of those county time. I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
Commissioners, I would say for the hours, my recommendation is any, anytime you are doing work with the county commissioner hat on, things that you wouldn't have been invited to maybe if you weren't a commissioner, or phone calls, emails, things that you're being reached out to or communicated with because they want to talk to a commissioner or they want a commissioner's presence. That's what I would consider hours of work. And it could be, I mean, it could be more than 40 hours a week, some weeks, or it could be none. You may have an off week and you're not doing anything. But if you're answering emails, taking phone calls from constituents, that is county commission time. If you're at a chamber event and they invited you as a commissioner, that's county time. That's commissioner time. So, that's what I would look at. I know we've talked about over the past few months, year, about trying to keep track of times. Some of you have kept giving me numbers on possible hours, average hours. It's never going to be the same. That's kind of why we put in here five, seven, 10, or 15. But did want to, to reiterate what Helen said, the 11,340 is the lowest in the state for commissioners that have, even with an administrator, probably even without, I would say it's probably the lowest, knowing what, that counties usually pay more. Cedra County, of course, over 100,000. They're full-time. They have staff, they have staff, they have offices. That's their full-time job. So, it's not a comparable. But that average pay with five commissioners of 25,943 does not include Cedra Counties. It does include Johnson Counties, which is in the 50,000. But your neighboring counties are kind of in the $30,000 range with administrators.
I, you know, I, I just, I don't write down or log anything. But you know, I, I feel like I probably get close to the 10 hours a week between the reading of all this. I, I know there's other commissioners, Hurst, Borgner, probably spend quite a bit more time than I do. So, but, but I, I feel the, you know, close to 10 hours a week is, is fairly common, you know, for, for, for me. Like I said, I, I know some of the other ones that attend more of these functions than I do in our capacity, like Commissioner Herschel attends something and he'll come back and report to us, which is helpful, you know, of, of what he heard or did at that, at that, at that meeting. So, you know, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty satisfied for myself with, with 10 hours.
Helen, you're the HR.
Yeah.
I know we're not regular employees, but what's your recommendation based on your findings?
Well, and I mean, that kind of comes down to, I don't know what you guys work. I, I've never done your job, so I don't know. And it's not like we have you guys in-house where we see you a lot. You know, you guys are doing a lot of things out in the community. So...
Well, and that's the other thing that might afford. That was my whole point. I talked to administrator about that too. Maybe if we made it where it was enough, it would affect that you could go be in the community more. How much more effective could we be at, at economic development if we were available? You know what I mean? Could work apart. Believe me, I made a lot more than that before in my life, you know. But it, it might make it where someone serving could go out and effectively be in the community more than what they currently are, being, being saddled to a full-time job. That, that was my whole point with this whole thing.
Well, I'll say this. I was here when we entertained the, what, is it sixth graders?
Yeah.
And I put in my time as well as some of you others. But in the time I was here, had a little guy back there ask what we made. And Patrick, remember, he's grinning. And what I told him, his comment was, why would anybody ever do that? And then his teacher sitting over here chimes in, says, yes, explain that. Why would anybody do what you're doing for that kind of money? Well, goes back to not everything you do in this world should be for a dollar. Something should be for, we're talking about... Something should be for, we're talking about charities earlier. This isn't a charity, but it's one of those things you do for your community, but that only goes so far. I mean, you, you still gotta be able to make a living, as Randy's pointing out, and as John has in the, White soul has in the past. So I'm kinda torn on, I prob, I feel it's not enough. But I also said I wasn't gonna raise my own salary. So if there's a lot of people in that thought, Patrick's deal might be the way to go. Make it happen in the future, when most of us won't be a part of it, or somebody can run against us, or do whatever they think is right in the meantime. And we ourselves would know where it's gonna be, as, as far as budget.
I've always had people ask me, you know, how do you like being a county commissioner, or, you know, what's it, and I'll, I'll say, well, there's a lot of reading that, you know, when you get reports every week.
Yes.
And it's not like you just go, okay, I'm done. You know, if you're doing your job, you gotta look through those and, and actually make, you know, if there's a suggestion to be made, you make it, if not. But also, when we're figuring out budget, you know, nobody, you know, wants to be told no, that you can't have what you're asking for, but also, we can't just be a money pot and say, here you go. You know, we have to be responsible for what we're allowing, allowing for the budget to be. We have HR that we, you know, we have the, the people that do, that are employees for the county, that we have to, to deal with, the administrators for each department. So yeah, it's not your average employee's job, you know? And there's times, you know, I didn't take, you know, anything we, we talk about, I don't take lightly. Even if it is just a, you know, somebody wanting to chew my ear a little bit, you know, they have just as much right to do that as anybody, especially, you know, if they live in the county and I, and they're in my district, I'm gonna, you know, take time to, to listen to them. Do I count every minute of that? No, not, not normally. But, but I can also, if I go someplace, and I'm sure you guys are this way, but you'll know five or six people or more, and sometimes they wanna talk. So it's just one of those deals. I, I think, you know, when I ran, there was a, a person that was running against me that was younger, and a stay-at-home mom. And I would've loved to have ran, done, been in this job earlier, but I worked a full-time job with a lot of overtime, and there was no way. And now I work at a job that's full-time, but if I need to go on an event, or wanna do something, be a part of it, you know, I can put in for time off. And I use vacation time. So I look at this job as, as not being a way to get rich, for sure, but also, but I, but I like to serve. And I, when I got elected, I wanted the people in my district to feel like that I was representing them, and not just anybody that's in this demographic or this demographic, but everybody. So, and I think the rest of the commissioners here were the same way, we, we look out for everybody.
Okay, I'm not the, I'm kind of a numbers guy, and I'm not. But what's our total budget we just passed? Ninety-six...
It's around ninety-some million dollars.
Okay. As I recall, it's ninety-six point something. But what are we paying right now? What, what do we pay last year to all the commissioners? Would you have that information available?
Um, the total budget line item? Hmm, I can get you a total.
Eleven-eight times five, wouldn't it?
That's what we actually received, but she might have a little different number because there are some benefits.
I don't care, I'm gonna, this'll be the last...
But I, I'm, the thing I'm driving at is, how much is an increase of any kind gonna change the mill levy or anything? It's so miniscule. But it's so miniscule, but yet, it's the wrath of the voter.
Can this be good to, to vote? I mean, so we don't make the decision?
No.
Well, I will say this, and this will be my final words, I reached out to, I know the rest of you did, by a former commissioner that helped set up the five, I'm not revealing names, said if you had to do it over, he's a hundred percent on board with this. He said, I'll call the Tribune if you want me to write an article, cause I want people to know I support this, we should've done something different.
So I, I wanted... I wanted to answer your question real quick. For twenty-twenty-six, the total budget line item for commissioner salaries is fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight, eighty-five.
And if we went to any, any, hell, if we went to thirty-six, the top that we're considering.
Okay.
Thirty-six, five, twenty-seven, times five.
Ninety-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Versus fifty. We're adding another fifty, what, sixty thousand? And, and sixty thousand's a lot of money. Anytime I look at a bill, or I look at something that's that big, in my personal stuff, that's a big chunk. But in something this size and scale, it's, it's miniscule. PC equipment, blow motor, whatever, somebody laser truck on its side, those kinda things in my business, and many other departments, it's, you, you can't guess it that close. There's no way you can guess it that close, whether, whether you're gonna have an extra fifty thousand spent or not. And so I, 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 I see what's being said here, but how it's gonna affect the people. I, I think I talked to the former commissioner, he put out, and, and I, I left him a note on my thoughts.
Yeah.
And I didn't write that down down either.
I didn't either, I talked to him for about, I talked to him for about twenty-five minutes.
I would rather see this hundred and thirty thousand dollars go towards employees to keep them up to the, their wages. Quite frankly, I, I just, you know, I, when I looked at this and tried to figure it out, cause I, I think Randy, Commissioner Parks has a good point. But the point is, my point is, is what salary will entice someone to do this? You know? There's only about four, maybe five potential candidates, the way I see it, and I'll, I just throw it out as my opinion. Those that own a business can get away, those are in upper management that can get away, those that are, that, that have a boss that, that will let them take the time off for that, knowing that it might be in their best interest, or somebody retired. I wish we could attract some of the younger, but I don't know how. And I don't think that the, that raising the salary to eighteen, or twenty-four, or twenty-five, or thirty-six is gonna get a, someone, I don't know. But I just question that.
And I would just say, on public service, I mean, just kinda to mirror your, your point here, people who are in public service, a lot of time are, are there for the passion. They find this is their, their passion, and what, what means something to them, to help their community. So I would tell you that it's two-sided. It's the wage, and it's also the compassion, or the passion to do what you guys do. They kinda go hand in hand. You have to have both.
The pay hasn't deterred people from asking me about being a county commissioner. That hasn't come up. It's like you said, it's a patient for wanting.
Mm-hmm.
Well, guys, we just came, we're in the middle of a, of a election canvas. I've, I've been a part now of that for three years, really didn't know how it all worked. But in those three years, what I noticed this morning is, all the ride-ins, all, all, all the public offices, that it was a ride-in, and nobody ran. Nobody cared enough to run. So are we getting to a point, where, where, is this a part of the problem? Could be, could very well be.
It definitely is, I mean, I replaced, he couldn't afford to, to do it anymore, I mean, but then, you know, basically, he, he was smart, very smart, very, this is, very, business-wise, and, and, you know, it was just, it was just giving up too much for him. And, you know, they're definitely the kind of people that we, we would like to have, I feel, you know, we would like to have, young and, and into this too, but, um, you, you're right, Randy's right, you ain't gonna get him for, for, for what we're, what we're offering.
And whatever we change it to.
Yeah.
Probably isn't gonna change the attitude on most.
The only difference would be like John Whitesell, where, I'll speak to him, because that was in a study session where...
And he, he was open.
He exhausted all his time off, didn't have it anymore, it was gonna cost him his job, he exhausted every bit of his pay to pay for insurance for his family, because, because he exhausted his, his time off, he lost his insurance, which is totally unfair for someone wanting to serve in this position. I, I'm personally not taking this as a personal thing for me to do, but I, I'd just seen that, and I've seen you use your time off, and I don't think that's fair to you to do that. And, oh, push that, didn't mean to do that, you know, use it all up, and then when you and, and your missus wanna go do something, you got time off, and I mean, I know you chose to do this, but could you afford to do something else where you didn't have to worry about that if it was more? That's the question I posed this all by.
Well, and Lex, when I ran, I knew what the pay was gonna be, so, but, and my first question was to my employer, you know, I'm, I wanna run for election, if I get elected, you know, I have these meetings for sure, and then we have other meetings and other study sessions, and, you know, it's, and they're like, we, we could work around it, you know, as long as I get my hours in at work, you know, and get my, you know, do the job, they hired me there for a full-time employee to do. So, that being said, I, I don't under, I, you know, the city council just had elections, and I know you were talking about canvassing stuff, and am I understanding this right? The city council, they don't get paid?
No.
And so, again, we have a, the city of Hutch, pretty good-sized city, and we have people that are on that council that, you know, we empower the, you know, decision-making, and then, you know, when things are, you know, we wanna complain about something that's maybe not done the way we would do it, but you might not have somebody on there, on that council that even has any expertise in that, or, you know, they have, because of the fact they don't get paid, you know, they weren't able to go to a meeting or something else too. So I, I just, pay is one of those things where, I, you know, I, I could get by where we're at, cause I have been, it hasn't been, you know, making me stressed, I haven't been stressed about it, so. But I also knew, you know, when I ran, there was, you know, the person I was running against, they were, you know, wanting new ideas, or younger, you know, younger people. So that's great, but...
Well, you know, an exact thing, I was on the ambulance board for years at home, and it started out all volunteer, and it worked real good. Most employers said, yes, you can put in your time. But then when they started seeing how much time it took and how it affected their businesses, it was, it was a different story. Then pretty soon, we had to hire at least one full-time person to make that a twenty-four, seven ambulance service. And, which is fine. You, you figure out ways and you work around things. Parameters change as you go along in any business. But that is a similar situation. You, you've essentially got a volunteer deal, but at some point, can you keep it that way? I, I don't have the answers. You know, I've lived with it, but, uh, we can talk this thing to death. Do we wanna make a point to keep better records? Our options, make a change and pay for county commissioners in the pay, table the discussion for further data, maybe, or make no change. What's your thoughts, guys? Are you willing to make a change today and put up a motion and vote yet, up or down? Do you want a little more time to discuss it? Or you wanna just kill it worth it? Well, the motion two, would have, would it, would do either the first and last option, or you wanna study it a little bit?
I'd be open for more study, just to see, but I really don't think, I'm not gonna have any, I really don't picture anybody coming up to me. I, I really don't think I'll ever have anybody come up to me and say, hey, moneybags, you know, you're, you're making, you know, a ton of money at, you know, working for the county, or, you know, representing the county. Even if we did a, a raise, I'm just saying, because it's not, I, I've never thought of any of the elective officials when growing up in Hutch, that they were, you know, like, like Ron was saying, most of them were older gentlemen that I knew, so they were either president of their company, or they had, you know, they had time available, or they were retired, you know, so they'd already, you know, worked their, their eighty hours for the, for their work-life. So when they served, they were just here, so anything they got was just to help pay for travel, or, you know, their, their time for visits and stuff, out of, out of city or out of county. So, but I would be willing to, you know, if, if we need to look at it more and just kinda see, maybe, you know, keep track of our hours for, you know, a few weeks here and just to see, you know, what everybody does.
I, I would go for that also, um, you know, and we, we really need to look back, this ten-eight, you know, how long's this been going on? I mean, we, we, we don't even get a cost of living raise, you know?
Well, we did vote that in.
Five percent.
Five percent?
We get the same as, as our...
The same as the employees.
We, we, we do.
We did agree to that.
Five percent.
We get five percent.
That started the beginning of this year.
Yes. But, but, along those thoughts, yes. But, but, uh, the ten-eight, where that came from, was the long division.
Yeah.
The money that was there when there was three, got divided by five, and that was done so that we weren't, it was, it was the only way they figured they could get it passed, a five-man commission, is they weren't gonna spend more money. And that's what that was all about. I mean, hell, otherwise, why would you have considered it? It's, it was one of those deals, we want a five-man commission, and we're not gonna make it cost, and the taxpayers at the time said, we're gonna have more money there. And that's how it came about.
Okay, well, should we make a motion to, I guess, can I make a motion?
I, yeah, we gotta get moved off-center, good deal.
Motion to go with option two.
I make a motion to go with option two.
Let's do a little more study before we say, actually do something. Correct?
Correct.
I'll second it.
Can we put a, a timeframe when we come back and, and do that?
Yes.
Whether to just leave it open, can we say, okay, we'll come back in two months, or one month, or six weeks, or...
Six weeks.
Just for the minutes, so there was a, a request to make an amended motion, now we have an amended motion to table it for six weeks, right, gentlemen?
See, that would put it, what date would that put there?
Want me to make amendment? I'll make it.
I, I think, I think Commissioner Vincent, you're, you're, he, he's amending his motion to be, as you suggested, until the second met.
Will you, will you follow through?
Second meeting in January?
Will it be the first meeting in January, I think, or second? It'd be in January.
It'd be in Jan, um...
Second one in January.
I probably would've missed that one, so...
Or you could do the second meeting in December, it's one month, the six, six weeks to four weeks.
Would that be all right to you guys?
December nineteenth, or seventeenth.
December, yeah. One month, right? Uh, one month, right? Okay. The motion's good. Amended to, no longer the one, uh, bring it back in one month.
I'll second that amendment.
Well, hey, what, when's our meeting?
December 17th, Wednesday, December 17th.
Okay, that's within, yeah.
I'll just restate, the motion was to table this until the December 17th meeting.
Good enough. Okay.
As a discussion item, I would, what would you think about each one of us talking as our constituents out there, and see what they have to say, in addition to keeping hours?
I've been doing that already.
Good enough. Any further discussion? Let's have a vote. Help us out.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Bockner?
Yes. All right. Item A, R8, 8A Monthly Reports.
In the agenda packet, it's monthly reports for 18 public transit, the appraiser, automotive, county clerk, community corrections, district attorney, emergency management, and facilities department. Any questions on anything in their reports? All right, the only other thing I had on here is just a reminder that the county has a table for the Hutch Chambers Annual Meeting next week on, so, November 18th. I think we have, we will have three commissioners there, so we will notify the public that the three of you will be there. Of course, you don't talk business, but we have three commissioners and a couple staff members, and just was bringing that up.
And that's...
If other commissioners wanted to attend, I think we have Commissioner Bockner, Parks, and Hirsch.
And I'm sure I put it on my calendar, but...
Time?
The doors open at 6:00 PM for the Meadowlark Building, and the dinner begins at 6:30. It'll probably end, I think, around nine o'clock, or eight or nine o'clock, I think's when it ends.
Depends on the speaker.
Yeah. And this one is Rex Hudler from the Kansas City Royals.
Through the chamber.
Through the chamber, yes.
And that's the, what day? I'm sorry, I was... I'm sure I got it on my calendar.
That's all I have.
So, where are we at here? Commissioner, we'll need to have a motion for an executive session, correct?
Do you wanna have Commissioner reports?
Oh, yeah, we should do that, because people may not... I don't think we're gonna do any business there, are we? There would, so if anybody didn't want to wait around till after we come back, Commissioner reports. Ron?
Well, I guess, words out about the battery storage on Bureau Haven Road, I've received a call, um, that's coming down the pipe. Of course, the first call I received is, obviously, don't want it. And, um, I, um, you know, they, they get, you know, the fire damage, the danger and stuff, and I haven't, I haven't found that, I haven't, I haven't really looked at it. It's all very, very new, so, I mean, you know, they say, well, electric cars, can't put them out, they burn to the ground, and you can't put the fire out, and this would be a hundred times worse than an electric car, and, you know, I don't know where to go to find out some, some, some good information on it. So I've been kinda digging into it, but it's, it's like anything else, it's, you find what you wanna find on the, on the internet.
I've been getting phone calls, too, now that you mentioned, and I was gonna mention it later, too. I have some thoughts when you're done, and it's my turn. No, it's...
Yeah, it's just starting.
Randy?
Well, I was just gonna say thank you to all the veterans that served, currently serving. We weren't here where we could say anything, but we have observing the building being green for the proclamation that we do for that, veterans, to honor them. So thank you for your service. Also, congratulations to all those that have won their positions, whether it be city or all the other things, school board, and certainly for Jenna, her staff at the clerk's office, and all the volunteers for all their hard work, again, pulling off another great election, and I think that, I think they do a fantastic job. Having come into this meeting just from a canvas meeting, I'd encourage the public, if you ever have any questions about elections, if you're listening to this, you're welcome to come, that's an open meeting, and observe that. You can have, you can actually even come in and observe them opening mail daily, if that's something you choose to do, and find out a lot of questions about election integrity, and I can tell you, it's of the highest integrity in Reno County. They find anomalies, and they stop them, or they approve them if they can get them resolved, and so they do a great job spending buku hours doing that. So thank you, and hats off to them.
And now that you mention it, it's, they state the Kansas statute.
Yep, yeah, they follow the law.
That it's spelled out in our Kansas statutes, what they can allow and what they're not allowed to allow. And we, as Randy pointed out, we've got a group over there that's very good at what they do.
Well, second to none, really, if you wanna tout them, because I know when Dawn and her were together, they went around and did some training around the state.
That's right.
And so a lot of the goods and results around the state are due to the people and the staff that were here, I think, so...
Well, and the number of all...
That's a great asset to have here.
Well, and the number of volunteers that work.
Yeah, I said that, yeah.
I mean, it is tremendous, the people that volunteer, that are there year, year after year, every election, and...
And that's, that's another area where it's damn hard to find people to do the job.
Exactly.
And, and they're having problems with it, as you, as you guys pointed out. You were, where are we at, Richard? Ron, anything?
Yeah, naturally. I mentioned earlier about WIFCO's honorable merit mention. There was another 19 or 20 companies that also, in Reno County, that also came under those merit winners. And there was two that were special. At the regional South Central Kansas, to the Stars Business Awards winners. In the Agribusiness Award, Kansas Ethanol was the highest rating, highest merit. They were, and also in retail services, Ray &amp; Sons Roofing. And so, though, that, along with another 20, 21, 22 companies and businesses in Reno County, congratulations. And that's a lot of good, positive things going on out there.
Yeah. We tend to look at the negatives and not see the positives.
You know, regarding service, Randy, you were talking about trying to get people, and there were so many that didn't file for public service. I've had a lot of people come up and say, boy, I'll bet you get chewed out a lot, you know? And I said, no, it's not that bad.
Yeah.
I said, people just kinda wanna know why you did something, and the reason for it. Now, they may still be perturbed after you get done telling them, but, but that's, you've got to have a reason why. And, and there's certain rules and regulations one has to go by, and, and if they don't seem right, maybe they need to be looked at. So, and my comment was, it's not all that bad, okay?
Most, most people, if you give a reason, are, will, will listen, and, and, you know, there's some common ground, or at least they know why. And that's what they wanna know, is why. I agree. Anything else? Well, Ron brought up the fact that this electric storage battery unit, yes, I've gotten a few calls, too, and it's, it's come to a head. Whether it's this one or another one, we, we've known for a long time that something would happen. This is Reno County. We know what kind of projects are aligned as far as energy. I'm not saying yes, no, in-between. What I am saying, this is kinda what Ron alluded to. I would like, in, in the stuff we were handed out, two things stuck out at me. It would be built under, and they list of initials, and then items so-and-so, so there's a federal or state agency that's putting, that it would be, be built to those standards. Talk about reading. I think we need a copy of that regulation, so that we can read.
Wouldn't that be something that we're gonna cover in future meetings?
It could be.
Yeah, it's not really a common comment at this point.
Well, I don't know that it is. Why can't we ask for the, the information, so that we can have read it, so that we... Am I out of line?
Well...
If I am, I am.
I don't know if you're out, I think you're maybe out of process, is probably... Where this is at, just for the public and for anyone, there was a battery storage company that had a meeting with zoning, just to ask, just to ask how our process worked and what we'd look at. They have not applied for anything, or asked for anything, and we have certainly not agreed to anything. And I think at the same time, they had a meeting with the county, they met with various other people throughout the community, and so there's, you know, the things being discussed, which is fine. But in terms of just where it's at, it's, it's one of these projects that some, there's a group, and there could be multiple groups that have, that are, that are looking at Reno County that haven't talked to us, for all I know, because this technology's kinda popular right now, and there's demand. But anyway, there's, there's interest, they haven't formally applied. If they formally apply ever for permitting, then we'll put them through our normal process, and there will be public hearings, and notices, and opportunities for the public to be heard. And if we advance past that and do a development agreement with someone, or propose one, you know, really with any new build or technology, we're gonna look at fire safety, we're gonna look at environmental impact, we're gonna look at all those things we normally would, and we certainly would with the batteries, with, with that kind of facility. But we would, but honestly, any new development that utilizes modern technology is gonna have a different fire issue than an old, than something that's older. That's just because more of these kinds of rare earths and battery things, and electrical usage is involved. So anyway, but I just wanna make, I don't want anyone to look at this meeting and think that we're 20 miles down the road on something, 'cause we're really not. There is some interest, we've kinda told them what the process would be like if they formally apply. If we get an application, that would be a core document, and we would send them through planning and zoning. Dawn, is there anything else you think I should say?
No, and there are a lot of issues I need to answer.
Well, my point is, is we as a board, through you guys, or some way, need to know what's required, because what may be good in one place may not be good in another, depending on where it's location and various things, but for us to be able to vote on it, we need a hell of a lot more education than we've got right now.
I believe that's where the planning commission comes in, that would bring us back that information.
Yeah. I mean, there's national standards for these things, and when they tell me that, which I'm not an engineer, so it doesn't mean much to me, anyway, but we, we take that information, but we, we would double-check it for any kind of project, and we wouldn't just rely on someone's word for it. We would do our own, we would find our own facts also, and present it to the zoning board, and then, you know, it would come to you guys eventually, if that's what happened, so...
Well, as long as the process goes forward, and the correct political process is what I'm getting at, and because I, for one, need the education, and I'm sure everybody else does, because it is new enough technology. And with that, anybody else? You guys have anything you need to...
Well, I was just, like, we were talking about the election, and I wanted, that is a positive, but also, we just had our 45th class reunion through Hutchai, and we got to tour Hutchai, but also, we went to parts of the, of the school, the college, the VOTech program. And when I was visiting with a number of people at each location, they, they work hand-in-hand, but they work with the county in quite a, in quite a few programs. And so it's trying to get, you know, people that, it's great if you, if you can get a two-year or four-year degree, or master degree, and, and you can get a job that pays you, you know, X amount of dollars, that's great, but if you can just get a VOTech degree and become, you know, a mechanic, or plumber, or electrician, you know, or apprentice, I think those are great attributes for that, for that learning facility, and for the county, and the city, and all the other little communities around, around here. So, anyway, I just was very blown away, 'cause I hadn't been in the high school for, for a long time, and to see it, and then also the college, when it was, it was an uplifting event.
There are several shortages in many of these categories you were talking about.
Since you brought that up...
The pendulum swings. It swung probably too far one way. Now, we need these over here. At some point, maybe the pendulum will get, so we got what we need on both ends, but, but it tends to do that. You train for this, you got an abundance here, you don't have enough here. And let's, let's hope it's, there's a need right now. For those kind of technicians, and, and the kind of work they need to do with all the computers and everything on every, every piece of equipment, every car, every, it's, it's a different field than it once was, and, and we need the schooling for that.
Since you brought that up, this morning at the Chamber Ag Breakfast, Prairieland Partners just announced a new 7,000-square-foot addition on, that portion of it is, most of it is dedicated to their program in coordination with Hutch Juco for their potential employees to train. So, that's a real, real plus, and a big addition, and a big addition.
There's, there's a lot of local companies that participate with them, hire, hire kids in those, I shouldn't say kids, young people in, in those fields to help educate them, like Ron is talking. It's, it's a joint effort, not only by our schools, but by the businesses we work with on a daily basis. So, they deserve their thank you, too. This just doesn't happen always in the public sector. Any other? If not, I'm, anybody else have anything? Otherwise, I'm gonna call this meeting.
We're gonna have anything?
Oh, that's right, we need to have that. And we need to have the...
Human Resources Director and myself will just sit with you guys on that one.
And where are we having it here? Looks like...
I think we'd be fine to have it here.
Looks like, yeah. That keeps everybody close, and, and how long?
15, plus whatever the break needs to be, so that...
You wanna read it, so it's right?
If, I think, we'll stay in until 11, what was it, 11:45?
11:35, sorry.
Oh, 11:35, sorry, yeah, so we'll stay till 11:50. So the, I would request, staff would request a motion to, for the board to enter executive session until 11:50 AM with the Human Resource Director and the county councilors. Subject matter be county employee performance and justification for the executive session is to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel.
I'll motion to do that.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second. We wanna do this roll call, or... Yeah, you're there. Give it a heck. Abigail.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Bockner?
Yes. Thank you. I'm going to call the meeting back to order after executive session and I will state that no business and there won't be any votes or anything, any business as a result of that meeting. And with that, is there anything else I legally need to do? With that, I would go ahead and declare, declare this, this, this meeting adjourned. Thank you.